This is just a workshop, we don't need to take roll call, but we can acknowledge one, two, three, four, five, six, seven of us are here. All yours, Mr.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Protem. So off the top, I just want to go over a few housekeeping things. The first is that Mayor Kaminsky is not going to be here for either the work session or the regular meeting. We'll address that formally at the beginning of the regular meeting. She's at the kickoff ceremony for the AWC conference and Sean Bouts, our city attorney will be here for the regular meeting, but not for the workshop. So it will be the seven council members only for the workshop. Before we get started, I want to point out to you that you have a letter in front of you. Each of you has that. This is the actual letter that was sent from the city to the developer with respect to the Mission Avenue roadway. All of the information in the letter has been packaged in the appendix that you received prior to the May second presentation that went over all of the details of this project from its inception. But this is the actual letter that was sent from the city. So we wanted you to have that so you could refer to it throughout the course of this discussion and for any other questions that you may have. And so with that, I just want to remind council and for the viewing public who may be new to this conversation, kind of the timeline that it took to get here very briefly, and then I'm going to turn it over to parametrics for their presentation regarding the design and the steps forward that we're proposing to take with respect to the work authorization that that you all referenced at the June sixth meeting. So going back to August sixteenth, very quickly, we, the city discovered this unscheduled construction going on. And upon further review, realized that the developer had failed to call in eighty percent of the required inspections. And so we knew at that point, we had a road on the ground that we had not inspected. And so those protocols were not met. On August twenty third, we started a process of doing due diligence that consisted of several tests, slope and grade test, flood test. We reviewed compaction reports, we reviewed paving tickets. And then we did coring samples and that took place on September twenty third. So all of this activity taking place in the weeks following the discovery of this construction and all of the data from those tests and from those reviews were reviewed by ourselves, the city and our on-call engineering contractor, parametrics. And so the letter that you have in front of you dated September twenty second and the technical memorandum that's attached dated September twenty first. All of that went to the developer on September twenty second, indicating that the city was rejecting the roadway in its entirety. And so you can see all of the reasons associated in that letter and the technical memorandum. On October third, and you can, and you can see where the city directs the developer to prepare a plan for repair of the roadway for review by city staff. So that's what we were asking for as a remedy to the deficient roadway. On October third, we, we had our first meeting between the parties to establish a repair plan and we thereabouts between then and the end of the year, set these deadlines that we mentioned in the previous presentation, June thirtieth for work start and April fifteenth for approved plans. And those were both designed to make sure that we got this done after school ended and before the Kramer Parkway overpass was completed and tied into the roadway. And then fast forward all the way to April twenty fifth of twenty twenty-three, that's almost seven months later. At that time, we received the developers' first attempt to remedy the deficiencies on the segment east of the roundabout, which is what we're going to be talking about for the balance of this evening's discussion. And we received two plans. One was a proposal to grind and overlay approximately a third of that segment. And the other was a proposed complete reconstruction. But the manner in which it was submitted by code, we were not able to formally take in to our possession. It was not stamped. And so we were not able to accept it. On May second, we came before you and proposed and recommended that you approve our recommendation to issue a task order to design and bid the repair of Mission Avenue to parametrics. And that's what occurred. Last week, or excuse me, last meeting on June sixth, council suggested that we have more discussion. And so we've invited parametrics to kind of walk through their process. At, at the time that we issued the work authorization, which was approximately June, I'm sorry, May third and up to now and to answer any questions about going forward. And so I'm going to turn the floor over to KJ Hanley from parametrics to walk you through that process and he'll be open for questions as will staff following the presentation. So KJ.
Thank you. So KJ Hanley with parametrics. I don't think I've had the pleasure of meeting most of you yet, but nice to see you here. So in general, like you said, we're just going to kind of go through, we've started doing the design. We, we did the initial survey. And then we initially just started looking through the project to figure out exactly what needed to be addressed. What was salvageable, not wanting to just throw out everything and restart if stuff was workable and usable. So I want to go to the next one. So to just kind of try to keep it simple on this, essentially broke it up into just kind of two pots to look at this for tonight. So items that are not meeting the city standards. So generally these would be items that we're looking at will need to repair or replace or do a design deviation to grant if it's too far out of the standard. And then there was some items that were generally outside of the approved plans. But either we're, we're salvageable or can be used or close enough to the standard that we don't see a safety hazard and things will work. Or again, we can do a design deviation to document and they'll be fine to leave. Next one. So this first one's just, it's pretty hard to see on there. I apologize for that. This one's just a kind of a recap of a little bit of what Mark was talking about. So the initial thing is the, for the whole lot, for the whole project, the pavement thickness deficiencies. So the overall paving, when it was tested in cord, did not meet the minimum thicknesses or tolerances. So it's too thin with the slopes and what's going on on this road. We'd looked at overlays. It wasn't going to fit on this. There's a there's some road grades and transitions that would have made it very difficult and likely cause ponding and puddling. So we're looking at removing all of the asphalt, replacing it with the proper thickness. As part of the initial design, when we looked at it, we talked with city staff and the decision was made to go with five inches of paving rather than the four inches that was in the original design. That's partially to be able to match the improvements that are supposed to be taking place on the west side where they're going to do an overlay to bring the thickness up. So that way, both sides of the road should be fairly consistent on their overall thickness and hopefully have a similar lifespan. So we're not piecing back and forth as this moves through its lifespan. Next one. All right. So this next piece here, again, this is one of the ones that's not per the standard. So this is gets into the striping kind of may seem minor, but this is the center line. This is right where the project done by Greenstone and the Kramer overpass project meet up, they meet up right at that island that you can just see. That's where the two match. So it's, it's a little bit difficult to tell, but right in between where the island is and where the striping or that island, the, the paint marks come in right next to those dimensions, those two marks, they're not meeting up. So they didn't coordinate. So everything's not striping and lining up. So the problem that's leading up to is that taper that's they installed in there. It doesn't meet the minimum MUTCD standards for how it's supposed to connect and then the length of the taper. So we need to revise that taper, which is generally just striping, but it factors into the next piece. We'll go to the next one. Thank you. So this one, again, this is that same area tied with the, the striping there tied with those bike ramps. So per the approved, per the city standards and per the approved plans, our city standards should be a minimum twelve foot traveling, five foot bike lane from face a curb out to center line. So that five foot bike lane needs to be maintained all the way until the bikes can leave the bike lane and then they enter onto the walk. So then they can get through the roundabout and cross. The way it's designed right now and the way it's out there in the field, there's only about sixteen feet of width from face a curb to the striking that they have out there. So we're not able to maintain that full five foot bike ramp. And then once we fix that island taper to bring that striping out to match even farther out as it goes, we're going to lose even more. So as part of this, what we're, what we've looked at and we're going to need to do is those bike ramps and that curbing will need to come out. And then we'll have to relocate those bike ramps about eighty feet to the east to where we can control those minimum lane widths to hit on that. And go to the next one. So this is kind of one of the ones where it, this is something that doesn't meet standard, but the recommendation is going to be to do a design deviation and leave as is. So the city standards have minimum curves for vertical, vertical curves with a sag or a crest. There's K values and minimum design values you're supposed to meet to make sure it's not, you know, it doesn't make you do a roller coaster jump on it. The center line and the south curb meet the design standards as they were shown in their plans and standards. The north side does not. Part of that's due to, there is a super elevation. So part of the road where it matches is all sheeded one way, and then it transitions back to a crown with flow going both ways. And because of that, the curbs got completely changed in the field and that resulted in some of those values not meeting for the standard. Being that we're in curves, we're coming up to slow transitioning zones and where it is, I, we don't feel that it's a safety hazard and it'd be acceptable to do a design deviation and leave in place rather than removing a bunch of curve.
Yes, I, I just want to clarify, everything you're, you're talking about this evening is, is strictly related to the east side of the roundabout.
Correct, sir. Yep.
Okay, because everything west has been already addressed.
Correct. This is only east side. Yes. All right, next one. So this is the center line location. So again, it seems minor, but the original, and we'll touch on this in a little bit, but the original approved plans had, they built the road a foot narrower than on the approved plans. Somehow the curbs got put in wrong, whatever happened. But that foot that they had wider gave six inches of buffer on either side of the road for the strip being and everything. It just gives a little breathing room. When surveying and looking at the road, the actual crown of the road as well as the striping is shifted about six inches off middle between the curbs. So therefore we end up with an eleven and a half foot lane and a five foot lane instead of the twelve and five. So we're not meeting the lane widths, the minimum on there. So as part of this, we'll reestablish a new center line as part of a new one and have them reshape the subgrade and repave the crown to put it back on the center. So that we can make sure. So obviously if you get those buffers, it's a little bit nicer, gives you room with construction tolerances, but so we'll address that as part of this. Next one, please. So again, this one's a little bit difficult to see, but I think you guys might have, this might have been seen in some of the previous discussions. This was part of the initial. And it's not critical on the colors and the shading that I have shown on there, but the city standards and the standard plans call for a minimum slope of two percent for the road cross slope going down. And that was what was shown on the approved plans. That's not what got built. Part of that is again, due to, if you look on the exhibit there, kind of where everything is the, in the middle of it, there's a big red block kind of triangle. That spot right there is where the road shifts from everything going one way and then it goes flat and then it goes back to a crown. So the majority of the areas where we aren't meeting the full two percent or one point nine or close enough to it is due to that transition in the, between the super to the crown. And you have to have, you're going to end up with that no matter how you do it. So it could potentially have been done a little bit better, but there was flood testing in that done. It does drain. It does work. So we aren't proposing to, we're going to do a new center line. We'll try to tweak up the grades, but we are proposing major changes to the grades and ripping it out because you'd have to start pulling curve in that. And if it's draining, safe to travel, we don't feel that's necessary. So on that one, we'll do a design deviation that will document through of why we're leaving it and why the slopes aren't at the two percent minimum. Next one. So these are the items that I, I didn't, I touched on a little lightly more. So these are the items that were not constructed per the plan, but aren't necessarily triggering redesigns or needing to be addressed. So as I'd mentioned, the roadway was constructed one foot narrower than the approved plans. With that, they did still meet the minimum twelve foot and five foot bike lanes. So we've discussed that earlier and that's able to remain as is. The curb lines were not built per the elevations on the plans. Some of that's construction error. Some of that's as we talked about, there was no super, none of that was shown in the design. So obviously when it got built, people adjusted and made whatever they need to do to work. But as we mentioned, it is working. So we're not going to look to rip all that out. There was one sign that was called to be relocated, appears to have been removed. We'll just coordinate and note to add another sign as needed on the new plans. The bike lane symbols were not installed. I'm not sure if that's due to reviewing the plans when the project hit at its halt or just missed, but easy enough, those will be added as part of the revised design. And then some center line striping was not installed as it was shown on the plans. Don't know why, but we're going to be revising the tapers to make sure those meet MUTCD and they're all going to be longer than what was originally shown anyway. And then on the south side of the road, the width of the planter strip is narrower than approved plans. So the approved plans show eight feet and on spots on the south side of the road, it gets down to about six feet. I don't know why, but again, there is some really pinched right away due to DNR, I believe it is property on that south side where the sidewalk even stopped short. Because there is no right away or no access for that. So my only guess is it has something to do with that, but if we're meeting the bike lanes and the drainage is not affected by that, that would just be documented in a design deviation. Next one, please. So again, I apologize for hard to see on the scale. So these are just kind of showing now. This is the proposed design as we're sitting. We have a ninety to ninety-five percent due at the end of the week. So we're pushing hard to get to that, to get those in so we can get this out to bid quick and still try to meet the timelines. So essentially we're staying within, you can see on the east and west ends of this project. We're going to the same line, staying within the same limits of what was originally done. So we'll still have the same saw cuts in that. On the west end of this project near to the roundabout, we're going to pull out the two existing bike ramps and the curb associated with those and relocate those back about eighty feet. And then we'll have to widen the sidewalk where those connect because once you direct bikes onto it, we need a minimum ten foot shared walk. And then other than that, the rest of it is just removing the road, regrading the center line, regrading the subgrade a little bit necessary to be able to put the five inches of asphalt back. Next one, please. Yes, sir.
I noticed the, the ramps. I've never heard the term bike, bike ramp used before is, is, are those in the design and YouTube probably involved in this too? Requiring bikes to go onto that ramp as opposed to allowing them to be a vehicle on the roadway?
Correct. So for the roundabouts, they, they direct you off because once the road narrows into the roundabout, it becomes becomes pretty dicey to ride a bike through the roundabout with the turning movements and doing it. So the general Wash Dot and other design guidelines is they, they generally get up. They give an off ramp or a specific path to direct the bikes onto the walk before, and then you go, you take your bike around to the perpendicular crossing outside of the roundabout. Cross that way and then come back in. So they had those in the original design. Sorry.
No, you're fine.
Okay.
Don't take off and go ahead.
So yeah, they, they had those in the original design. It's just the location of where they had in reality doesn't work. Okay. So this is the, the other big one here. So again, this is the pavement markings. So essentially we're going to be on either end, both of those tapers where it's transitioning where the, the island starts and then where the center turn lane begins or ends. All of those tapers were much too abrupt per the general, you know, MUTCD design guidelines for striping. So all of those are going to be extended to meet the minimum travel zones based on the speeds. And then as you can see, we'll extend the bike lane up to the new exit off there and then it will taper down to end to transition to show the bikes to get off on there. And we'll do new bike markings. And then also where this project had ended, probably about a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet east. The bike lanes and those stopped. So there was a gap between the new project and the existing condition. So we're going to go ahead and pick those up as part of this project to match into the striping, just so we don't end up with a strange gap of markings ending between the two. Next one. So glad I put the summary of the cost with that. So this one is the, the opinion of probable cost. So we're still working on it as we're going and tweaking it down, but as right now with a ten percent contingency, we're sitting at just under two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for assumed construction cost. I feel those numbers are pretty good. We've still been seeing pretty good bids this year, but as soon as I think I have that figured out, it'll flip on a dime and prices will change. But we're currently scheduled to, I think, like I said, get stuff to the city this week. I think comments get turned around next week. And I think we're planning to go to advertise right around fourth of July or end of the month. So it's going to, it's going to move pretty quick and go out there and see what kind of interest there is. Next one. Should be it, if I remember right. So sorry if I ran through that a little fast, but it's not a very big stretch of road. There was just trying to make sure we're explaining what things we found that didn't work, what we're fixing. And feel free to ask and we can skip back around any other slides or things if there's things you want to look at.
Yes, go ahead. Sorry.
I'll defer. Chris, I think you had a question.
Oh, thanks, Dan. I was just going to say, can you clarify for me? Maybe I'm not understanding it correctly. Four inches was the, was the original requirement, then it was five or you were going to five or can you?
Yeah, like so four inches is the original requirement and per the city standards, arterials have a minimum pavement of four inches over seven inches of rock. So the, we've been talking as the city's working on looking at updating standards, four inches is not, it's not a very beefy section anymore.
Right.
It's getting to be a little on the light side. So there was concern if we're already going in there, do we want to, the economy of scale of adding a little bit more in there seemed like a good investment. The other discussion was knowing that the other side of the road is going to be overlaid. It's anywhere from three and a quarter inches to, you know, three point seven inches and they're going to be doing somewhere around an inch and a half overlay. So that side of the road is going to end up five to five and a half. So if we brought this one up closer to the five, we'd be having a more consistent lifespan, hopefully between the two of them.
But the requirement that, that we had for the contractor was to do four.
Correct. And that we are tracking these as talking with Lisa in the city, these will be tracked behind the scenes separately. So this is not the additional asphalt in any work associated specifically with the grading or extra striping is going to be tracked as a separate pot of money so that it's not mixing between the required fixes and desired upgrades at the same time.
Right. Okay. Yeah, I was just, I wanted to clarify that because some of these are, you know, pretty darn close to four. Some of them are not obviously, but if we're going to five, then obviously they're not.
Right. And that's, no, and that's, we're not holding them to that standard. It was just, if where we were going in, the opportunity was to take advantage of it and do that with additional separate side.
Okay, thank you.
Was the position of the bike ramps as built part of the originally approved design?
Yes.
So we're kind of making a decision to change where the bike ramps were from the originally approved design.
Well, the originally approved design did not have a significant level of detail to show. It called out minimum lane widths seventeen, five, and then they showed bike ramps. So they essentially showed that it could work when in reality, if they'd have looked at the level of detail, it did not. So it's not, I guess it's, it can be viewed as that. I guess my view is they showed what they were going to do, the minimum lane, what's that they were going to hold. They did not deliver in that and what they built.
So the originally approved design, perhaps you would say had a flaw.
Good, or not enough detail to tell with the typical sections, just what's shown.
Insufficient detail, I'd call a flaw.
So in a couple of the slides, you mentioned that some of the deviations regarding like the super elevation would be, I think, listed as design deviations. I'm not sure if I'm saying the right word there. But then I look on the map and it is, is the whole section going to be cut out and redone?
Correct.
Okay, so it's, you're going to leave that in there. The super elevation is the way they were, but the whole chunk of road is going to be.
Correct. Okay. Yep. Because the, the way, the, the way this road is built, we have, it has to transition from that super back to it. So you could, you know, maybe you could improve it to get closer to the standards of what you're going to transfer, but you'd be ripping out a lot of curb and we could be talking three eighths of an inch, real minor differences on there. And with the draining, it didn't feel a good use of money.
Yeah, if there's anything else I'll throw in. The project is in no way symmetric, but for the opposite side of the roundabout, the acceptable portion, are the position of the bike ramps comparable?
That's a very good question. I, I don't know. I've raised, I haven't looked at that one on the design. I did share the findings earlier with David and Lisa, knowing what we're finding to see, but that'd be a good question to look at if they're pulling out an overlay or if they're going to be doing asphalt work, it'd be real easy to do some concrete patching, move what you need to do and you would never know when it's all done, it would be hidden.
I have a question. On the, the road is one foot narrower than the plan. Does it, can you speak to that a little bit more? What, give us some, what's the city requirement for the roadway width? And how's it measured?
These, you step in if I miss on this, Lisa. The city requirement has the minimum lane widths. So for the arterial, you need to have the minimum twenty-seven feet. So you're, yeah, you need a twelve foot lane or seventeen feet each lane. You need the twelve foot and the five foot shoulder. So they do meet the minimum standard of what's called in there, the original design, whether it was again, an error in their typical sections of what was shown or what was shown in the design, everything showed thirty-six. So if typically if they're going to submit and provide a little bit extra buffer, like if they want to do a six foot bike lane, great, not usually any argument, but that, so I think they showed something above the standard to meet and give a little more width and then somehow that's not what happened. Sorry, I'm not sure if that fully answered your question or not, but.
I guess I'm just trying to understand.
If I can add some context.
Sure.
We don't know because the inspections weren't called. And so this was on the ground before we went out and took any inspection detail. So we don't know the answer to that question. We know we have an approved plan with a width. We know what the minimums are and the plan adhered to those minimums, but for whatever reason, as KJ described, and, and probably a number of other options, it didn't get built at that width. However, still preserving the minimum lane width requirements that, that the city standard requires and are defined in that document.
So it meets the minimum requirement, but it doesn't match what they submitted.
Correct.
Is it potentially the reason for that, the right of way, getting squeezed down like you stated earlier?
No, no, because they specifically stopped the sidewalks and everything stopped short of where that is. And they have more than a foot of buffer in all the areas where they stopped around. And it's the same on the west side as well. It's where there is no right of way restrictions. It's a foot narrower everywhere. I don't know if it got staked differently. I'm not sure.
Yes, sorry. I, I guess, you know, hearing the information, the new information tonight and then comparing it with the information we'd already been given. Because it, from, from what I can tell, there was never even a minimum of four inches met on, on this section of road. Is that correct?
The the total road and we review it is viewed as a total road. So it's not, we didn't just evaluate this section only. But there is two tests on this section, two specific cores. One is yeah, three point six seven, the other's three nine nine or so one of them is under the other is essentially at.
Right. Right, uh, um, so in, in the case where you have the, it's the super elevation, is that right? What is the standard uh, at the low point and the high point in a situation like that when we have a minimum of four inches, let's say? What's, what are the standards? Is, is that the standard at the center point or is that high or low or does it matter?
So are you talking, I guess, I'm to make sure we, between pavement thickness or slopes?
Uh, no, pavement thickness, uh, when, when you have the super as you're coming around the curve before you hit the crown. Are, are the core samples being taken from the center of the road?
I don't. Yeah, sorry, I don't, I'm not sure where the cores were taken, that would be.
So there's a, there's a process that's defined by Wash Dot to uh, mark those places. And I'll have David come up and kind of explain how that was done.
So the width, did you actually take the, take the cores and the locations depend upon an X and a Y? So it's a random numbers that are generated from the calculator and that gives you the number for your X. So that'll be um, from the, let's say point zero. And then it tells you, okay, you can go ten feet, that'll be your X. Then you take another random generated number, it'll give you your Y and that'll be your width, so it might be on the, on the east side of the road or the west side of the road. And just depend upon what that number is, that's where you take your core. So it's it, so it's all random, does that make sense?
Yeah, well, I, I guess my, my question is if we have a minimum standard as a city that we have four inches on top of the seven, right?
Yes.
Uh, should, should we not then expect to have at least four inches no matter where you take the core sample from?
That was the issue.
I guess that's the question.
That's, that was the issue. We didn't have, so we had three point, I think three nine eight or whatever was. That was the max, none of them were four, not one of them was four.
Cause obviously in a situation where you have the super elevation and it goes down, you're gonna have a low point, you're gonna have a high point.
But you still have the same.
You should have at least a minimum four if you were at the low point and you should be somewhere well above that at the high point. Correct?
You should have four minimum no matter where you're at.
Right.
So, so let's say the issue was when we basically were found, they, they told us there was a super there. Without ever having looked at that themselves. The idea was, okay, we need to match that and so they started doing weird things in the field without letting us know.
Okay, and then I guess the, the other, the follow-up question to that is with these, uh, I guess, design deviations that we're proposing, we're going to five inches. And we're, we're moving the, the bike on ramps or off ramps. Um, I guess my question is how, how does that get reconciled from a standpoint of if we're ripping up the road? We're ripping up the, the, the pavement there and then we're gonna go up to five inches now. Um, how is that going to be separated from a standpoint of uh, we're, we're looking at tip, right? Or reimbursement?
So Lisa, you wanna field that one, please?
So tip free, is tip and lift reimbursement um, are only eligible for collectorial and arterials. This is an arterial, so any of the costs associated with that, um, anything we have to rip out. And I do wanna make the point that one of the problems with the bike ramps was the fact that because. The roadway was a foot narrower, that was where we got squeezed on the bike, bike ramps and uh, and the taper. Just, just to be clear, that was a big part of it. Um. Tiff and lift, we can get, we, we will seek reimbursement for our actual costs for all of the repairs. What, um, what we will be doing is when we look at, when we look at what we're reusing. We will have an accounting for what the, the base, the curbing that we've kept, those sorts of things. That Greenstone could still be reimbursed for. They obviously can't be reimbursed for that which is being deconstructed. And so that's how we would approach that. Does that make sense?
I'll try and paraphrase Lisa. Um, the portions of the project as originally constructed, which will continue through, you know, I guess, the, the next line. Uh, will be accounted for along with the additional costs that the city will be incorporating into this reconstruction.
That's, that's correct. What we will be deducting when we, when we accept the roadway, we have to. You, city council, accept the roadway, you accept the bill of sale, you accept the cost estimates. And we will have a full accounting of what Greenstone spent. What was removed from that, so what was removed from that? Deconstructed so that we could make this fix and what the costs for the construction are. And um, and that's how, how we will approach it and you'll have a chance to look at those numbers. We have every intent to be equitable in how we do that, but we do also wanna make certain. That we are delivering a road that is going to. Um, give the useful life that one would expect for a road of, that's collector arterial. That's our expectation. Yes, sir.
Wendy?
Yes, thank you. Lisa, are you in, um, do you have in your hands the Greenstone letter from Jim and Joe?
Yes, the mayor sent it to me because we were not included on that, but yes.
Okay. Um, and of course, some of, of the council members have met with the, with Greenstone. My question is on the west side.
Yes.
Of the roundabout.
Yes.
It doesn't sound like we're gonna need to do a whole lot of reconstruction on that one.
Well, so Greenstone, uh, on the west side, Greenstone is doing some grinding and paving, they are doing.
So Greenstone is doing that.
Greenstone is doing that. We have approved those plans, they're scheduled to start construction on July tenth for that portion of the roadway. This portion of the roadway, they did not provide us with stamped plans that we could approve to do the repair. And um, and so you, city council authorized us to go forward with this design. Uh, using parametrics, our on-call engineer.
And I think in the conversation, if I could paraphrase it, he says if, if there's something wrong with that road. We will absolutely take care of it.
Well, that, that is what they said, but we spent. Since September of last year through April of this year, trying to get them to submit a plan that was approvable. And the first plan that we got was when the deadline was looming. And it's, and the one that would, that could be considered, couldn't be considered because it wasn't stamped by a licensed engineer. And that is one of the standards in our, in our city code.
Uh, I think Andy was next, sorry.
Um, Lisa, I wanted to ask questions about, um, trying to figure out the path forward here because the letter from Greenstone that we got today. Um, says that. Um. Uh, the road by a licensed professional engineer concludes that the road does not meet the city of Liberty Lake Wash Dot standards and the proper fix is to remove and replace. The current asphalt, Greenstone will design and undertake that work and I think what I heard earlier is parametrics said that they are going to, that, that's the recommendation to take out the road. And redo it, is that accurate?
That is, that is accurate, not the whole roadway, reusing the base, reusing the curb.
But taking it out and starting over with the design, right? Um, so the second paragraph um, talks a little bit about um, the tiff and lift and the next steps. Greenstone has proposed some steps here about going to um, the county engineer. Um, and I'm just wondering what the next steps are. I mean, I've heard from, from um, parametrics and from you that. It's gonna be a quick process if we move forward on this path. Does the city feel like there's any um, benefit, any um, need to pursue the outlined? In here in the letter from Greenstone?
So uh, it, it was an interesting proposal considering that you, city council own the roadway. The county does not, the county engineer does not have any responsibility over the roadway. The county engineer has his own work to do and um, the reality is that at the end of the day. Ultimately, the city, city council has to be accepting of this roadway. Um, the only thing the county approves is that we follow the protocols with tip and lift and that we've met all of the requirements for that. There is a process associated that it is approved by the um, by the county commissioners because that's how that program was set up. But at the end of the day, this, the county engineer really doesn't have any say about any of this. Other than possibly to review um, the uh, cost to see if they are valid or if they're out of. Out of, um, it, they're skewed from what they should be for a project of this nature. Okay.
Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, Andy asked one same question, thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up? Um, I know you guys are not um, marketing and communications folks, but how do we communicate this to the city? The fact that we're shutting down, uh, or we're gonna shut down a road that we just previously had this shut down?
I, I think that, um, in fact, I think our city administrator has made it clear. The roadway was, that was constructed is substandard, it's going to have an impact. On the useful life of the roadway and ultimately will cost our citizens more money by not repairing it. And that, um, again, Greenstone is gonna get, is gonna be in and out in ten days. And I, I, I'm not sure, KJ can speak to what he thinks the timeline would be for this, the, for this reconstruction. Um, but at the end of the day, um. The closure on the west side of uh, the west side of the roundabout is much more significant. And needs to be done before we reopen Kramer Parkway. The one on the east side is this much shorter section, we've got a much cleaner, easier, more comfortable detour. Having the whole of the roadway closed would be problematic for the community and, and as I said, the west side is gonna be closed for maybe ten days, ten working days.
And, and I would say if I can add, from a communication standpoint, it would be our objective to let residents know that. As unfortunate a circumstances this is, we did everything that we could to schedule it at a time when school's not in session. And when it would have the absolute minimum impact, understanding there's gonna be an impact. But to have the absolute minimum impact, it's Kramer's not open yet, so it's not tied into that and school's out of session. And so from a communication standpoint, we would um, just be letting residents know that. Unfortunately, we have to close the road again to make sure that it's built to our, to our standards. Um, and then it will be open uh, and tied into Kramer when Kramer opens. Um, and, and hopefully, uh, we won't have to readdress it.
And, and we have been communicating that to the River District at the farmer's market whenever we've been talking to them and all we were waiting for was. The date from David and you gave it to us, so we're gonna start putting that out, yeah.
I, I have a question. Um, of the two forty-five, how much of that is over and above what is the standard?
Over and above what is this?
Well, we're going to five inches, we're changing some things for, because we want to, for the longevity of the road. How much of that two forty-five is attributed to that?
I'll let KJ answer that.
Uh, sorry, I don't have that broken out at this time. I will when I submit everything on Friday. Um, I'll make sure that I break that out to track and show the different pieces. So, so I don't, I don't know off the top of my head, I didn't track that, I apologize. Be one inch and it would also be the additional excavation. Um, so it's, it won't be hard to break out, but yeah, I don't have it off, so I will get that.
So to, to get to this thickness that you're looking for, you have to adjust the subgrade?
Correct, which we're already gonna have to adjust the subgrade to likely shift the crown and fix it to get it where we want, but yes, we'll have to pull out an inch of rock additional.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Um, I, it's, it's disappointing to hear that, you know, they didn't, they didn't build the road wide enough. To allow for the bike lanes to be the ri- the right width and um, that, that's affected the, the exit lanes as well. Um, and of course, the thickness, I guess my biggest question is, what are we putting in place to avoid this situation in the future?
So, um, we have had some very serious conversations about added inspections. And part of the problem was they didn't call them to begin with. Um, in our, we had the pre-con meeting today, actually for the Mission Avenue, we were very explicit. About the fact that we will be out there when they're paving, they, when they call us for the inspections, we will be out there monitoring. That, that it's our expectation. We've been very detailed on the inspections that they need to call us for. And if they don't call us for those inspections, they will be reworking the work.
And I'll add to that, there's some potential code enforcement things that we are beginning to look at. Uh, to incorporate into the process, but that's a longer and deeper conversation, but that's part of the answer.
Uh, uh, I have a question, not totally sure how to word it quite yet, but I'll take a stab at it. Is it unreasonable for me to think that? Um. Uh, now that we have some, something in writing, I would say from parametrics, that, uh, is it unreasonable to think that there? Uh, couldn't, is there not a chance to uh, bring Greenstone back into the discussion for the remedy?
Once we have an approved design, I, I would think that that would be a possibility. I, I, but I'm gonna let.
Yeah, uh, and. So I guess on that, I'll, I'll apologize a little bit of this, this gets a little. Um, the, if you have one person design a set of plans and another entity that maybe has not had the best relationship, build a set of plans. There's a lot of incentive for them to not ask questions, to not, if, if, say if there's, if something is not specifically clear. There becomes a lot of incentive for them to not ask, not verify and to just build whatever they see or they interpret they see. And then you can end up with issues again, so I get very nervous myself of the thought of. Turning over a design set of plans to someone else who may not have the best intentions to build it. Um, I'd like to say that they would do the best and utmost job on everything, but. Um, that can always get a little dicey, so if they wanted to run and do their own design and do it and they're accountable. That's, I think, easier for the city and for people to enforce when you split between them, I just see chances for trouble. My, my own opinion.
Jen, who, who designed the original plans that were approved by the city?
Greenstone themselves.
Okay. So they didn't stick to their own design?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, I think I clarified to say that what was delivered was not for the design. I think that's an acknowledgement, actually. So it's not that they intended to perform poorly, they inadvertently or did perform poorly and now we're sitting right there.
Yeah.
Um, I heard the word best intentions and I also heard the word trust, I'm gonna say those are challenging. Uh, for me to consider in what we think we have as partner relationships. Um, that's not too KJ at all, but that's the one thing I think I'm struggling with. Um, the ability is for us as an agency to execute in partner relationships, probably better. Um, but we can talk about that with style. Um, question, uh, start with Mark, on the twenty-fifth, they probably received a plan that you describe as a complete reconstruction.
Yes.
Um, was the detail of that plan ever considered by KJ or that group?
I'm not sure if the details, Lisa, you may be better equipped to answer this when this is phase two B.
Phase two B was a step in the right direction, it didn't go far enough, but that's not uncommon. We usually, the review process is generally an iterative process. But it was very late in the game when they submitted that phase two B that was. A step in the right direction, but still not there. And, and again, um, the timelines had been established specifically because we were trying to accomplish this. During the summer before Kramer Parkway opened and we've been talking about these timelines since.
October. And, and I'll, I'll add to that, the, just, just to reiterate, um, the point that. Regardless of the scope of that particular plan set, we, we could not accept it, we could not evaluate it. Um, as a proposed set of plans because it didn't meet our code requirements. And, and that was a discussion that went back and forth a couple of times, trying to get to a place where we had something that we could actually evaluate.
So maybe the short answer is no, the detail would kind of find, never covered for the, for KJ and this.
Well, I, I don't know that we didn't have any discussion about elements of, of what was being proposed, but I don't know that we reviewed it as a whole either. Cause we didn't accept it.
So, so one of the things that I wanna be clear on is that we asked KJ to look at this completely objectively. And to evaluate the section, understanding we knew that the width was not right, it wasn't as per plan. And there were, we asked him to evaluate it based upon. Um, based upon our city code and standards and also based upon what was in the plan set. And really to try and be as minimalist as we could so that. As we could so that we didn't, we weren't unnecessarily ripping out. Infrastructure that was invested. And I think that you heard from KJ's statement that that was exactly, he was very carefully weighing. Is this something that? Is meets the intent of the standard if we granted a design deviation? By the way, that is. One of this, there's some very specific criteria for approving a design deviation. And, and it still has to be considered in the public interest. So we have to reach a conclusion that it's, that it is going to be safe and it is gonna function properly. And, um, again, trying not to. Kill the fly on our forehead with an ax, but there were some repairs that absolutely had to be done.
I guess just to revisit the, um, the just needed a stamped, uh, engineer plan, sounded like a complete reconstruction. Um, sounds like it's fairly similar to what we're being just considered, considered.
It, it was a more limited version. It didn't, i- i- it was a more limited version on of what, but it was. A step in the right direction. That's, uh, that's the best I can say.
Um, the, the switch from, uh, the original design regarding the, the super elevation to the crown. That, that ended up coming out in the field. That was something that had to be changed in the field. And, and so I understand that. Was there ever, uh, any reason given for, uh, shortening the width of the, of the road?
No, there was not. Um, what I will say is that it is not uncommon when you're. When you're in a construction scenario, that you find things in the field and you make adjustments. The way the process is supposed to happen is they're supposed to call in the city engineer. Um, together, they decide what the, 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 um, revisions might be, though they have to submit revised plans. And then, um, they have to provide that in terms of record drawings. None of that happened. It was just like, oh. We've got a super elevation here. We'll fix it this way. And they just did it in the field without even consulting the city.
And, and furthermore, I'll, I'll repeat again, cause it, it bears repeating. During the phases of construction, ordinarily, you would be inspecting the work as it's happening and you could catch those things. As they were being contemplated or started and make corrections there and none of that happened.
And I will say that the inspections were clearly listed on the permit card, so.
Anything further? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
KJ, thank you. Appreciate it. David, thank you. So we'll, uh, take a few minutes for our seven o'clock meeting, yeah? All right, we bring this meeting to order.
Yeah. Can do, uh, implication.
Oh, yeah, yeah, sorry. Uh, Jen, will you do the implication for this?
Our Father in Heaven, we are grateful and to be this, uh, beautiful day that we've enjoyed here. We're so thankful for this. Uh, wonderful city that we have to live in and for the responsibilities that we have, uh, here to, uh. Guide and, and care for our city. We are thankful for the many other blessings that we enjoy in our lives. We ask thee to bless us this, this evening that we can. Um, work through the city business that we have before us and that we can, uh, find suitable, um. Solutions for, for the things that we need to accomplish here. And we ask for these blessings and favors in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Of the United States of America, and to the God for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible.
Okay, all right, we'll call the meeting to order now. Uh, okay, roll call, uh, council member Cargill.
Present.
House member Kurtz.
Present.
House member Van Oran.
Here.
House member Follier, here. House member Spencer.
I am here.
House member Dunn.
Happy to be here.
House member Solberg.
Here.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to excuse the mayor due to conflicting events.
Move to excuse the mayor.
Second.
Second. Uh, any discussion, hearing none, all favors say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right, make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Second, by council member Solberg, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, we have two citizen comments. We'll start with Mr. Mark Saba.
I'm Mark Saba and I am a resident of Liberty Lake. Two things I wanna cover. Uh, number one is the, was the winter go, uh, golf tournament we had about a week ago last Saturday. I wanna publicly thank all the sponsors and the participants. This year we had a hundred and fourteen golfers. Uh, I was very pleased with that as the whole committee was pleased also. Um, everyone seemed to have a good time. The weather cooperated and. Like I said, it was the second ever. You don't put annual behind it because if you put annual behind it. They expected the next year. Well, at the end of every event, we take a vote and ask if they wanna have a third. And everyone unanimously said yes. So we will have a third ever Winter Glow Golf Tournament next year. Okay, take that hat off and put on my Barefoot in the Park hat. We had a meeting last week, uh, pretty much sewed everything up. I, I've gotta tell you, this is, this event is gonna be probably one of the best that we've ever put on. Um, it's gonna be complete with a huge, huge car show. Uh, the inflatables this year for the kids, little kiddies to jump on is gonna be even better than last year. This is what I've been told and I, and I got it from a darn good source, right Jen? Um, we're also gonna have, um, vendors there. Uh, we're also gonna have, uh, food trucks are gonna be there. Um, we've got, we're gonna have. Kids, you know, kids events that they're gonna be able to do some, uh, face painting and I'd be able to do some painting of rocks and that type of thing. Um, we're also gonna have, uh, something new this year. Um, we're gonna have a dunk tank. And, um, it's gonna be run by the, it's gonna be a fundraiser for the Ridgeline, uh, band. And, um, it's gonna run from eleven to four. And we're looking for ten volunteers. To get done it. They'll be up there for about a half an hour. So far, I've got the band director from Ridgeline, Eric Parker. I got the mayor of Liberty Lake, Chris Kaminski. I've got the chief of LLPD, uh, Doc Damon. And, uh, you know, I'm putting the word out of anyone else who's interested, give me a call. We'd love to have you come out and get wet. So with that said, um, I just wanna, you know, just kinda give you an update that, hey. We're looking forward to a real, real fun Barefoot in the Park on August fifth. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have Bob Schneider.
Good evening. I'm Bob Schneider. I live in Liberty Lake and I've lived here since two thousand and one. I'm here tonight to thank the city. Our esteemed guest here for bringing the Purple Heart program to our city. I met with Tom and, uh, a couple of weeks ago and he brought to my attention, um, what was being planned. And being a veteran serving in sixty-four to sixty-six, uh, I very much appreciated that. So. You know, I, I, I just think that our city has. Appreciated so much, um, for what the, uh, veterans have brought and what they've done for them. The rotary, of course, their flags. And I have two uncles that are, um, were Marines in World War Two. And fought in the South Pacific. And the really coolest thing is when the flags were put up. I was going down, uh, country, this, uh, crossing Lake City way. Liberty Lake way. There they are. One on one's Elmer on one side, Manny on the other. That's so, so cool. And so again, you know, I appreciate, um, the city making, um, this day. Uh, or making the city a, um, Purple Heart City. I think it's just one more step. Um, as we go on through and, um. Give thanks to our veterans. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, are there any citizen comments on Zoom? All right, thank you. All right, moving right along, um, move on to our proclamation, um. Identifying city, city, city of Liberty Lake as a Purple Heart City, Kelsey.
Whereas on August seventh, seventeen eighty-two, George Washington established the Badge of Military Merit, which has the first. Which was the first medal authorized for enlisted soldiers in the Continental Army to recognize a singular meritorious action by a soldier. And whereas on February twenty-second, nineteen thirty-two, US Army Chief of Staff Douglas MacArthur. Established the Purple Heart Award in the spirit of the Badge of Military Merit in honor of George Washington's bicentennial birthday. And authorized the award for soldiers in the United States Army for soldiers who are wounded or lose their lives in military action. And August seventh is annually recognized as Purple Heart Day. And whereas in nineteen forty-two, President Franklin D Roosevelt expanded the Purple Heart Award to other branches of the United States Military. By authorizing the Navy Department to award the Purple Heart to personnel wounded or killed in action. Beginning with the attack on Pearl Harbor on December seventh, nineteen forty-one. And today, the Purple Heart is authorized for people serving in all branches of the United States Military. Who are wounded or lose their lives in military actions. And whereas, following the attack at Pearl Harbor until the day she passed away. Eleanor Roosevelt carried in her wallet a piece of paper with the following written upon it. Dear Lord, lest I continue in my complacent ways, help me to remember that somewhere someone died for me today. And if there be war, help me to remember to ask, am I worth dying for? And in our own daily walk, we should always remember those serving and their families and honor their service and their sacrifices in our words, hearts and actions. And whereas the James R. Shively Veterans of, Veterans of Foreign Wars Post fourteen thirty-five. Which represents and advocates for veterans in the community of Liberty Lake and Spokane Valley. Request the city of Liberty Lake declare itself a Purple Heart City. And the city of Liberty Lake would like to honor and remember people wounded and who have lost their lives in action and in service to our country.
Perfect. Thank you, Kelsey. Uh, this time, could I get a motion to, uh.
You have to read the last one, don't you?
Say again?
Motion. Motion's first, yeah.
Uh, gonna get a motion to declare the city of Liberty Lake a Purple Heart City.
So moved. Second.
Second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Perfect. Thank, anybody opposed? Yeah, no, thank you. Uh, now therefore, I Phil Follier, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, do hereby declare the city of Liberty Lake to be a Purple Heart City. And we commit ourselves and our community to remembering and honoring recipients of the Purple Heart Award in our words, hearts and our actions. Signed this twentieth day of June, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you very much. Let me sign it right this second.
Sure.
At this time, could we ask, uh, Mr. Tom Pauly to come to the podium for a few words?
Um, my name's Tom Pauly. I'm a resident of Liberty Lake. Live over on the other side of the highway there on Snake River Avenue. I'm also the post commander. Or VFW post fourteen thirty-five in this Spokane Valley. And, um, I was approached by the VFW. Judge Advocate for the State of Washington to see if there were any cities. On this side that might be willing to declare themselves Purple Heart Cities. Of course. This was the first one I thought of. And, uh, I met with Tom Solberg and Bob and we discussed it and. Uh, if, in the future, if you would like to get a couple of signs, you may have seen them before. When you cross the bridge over, uh, east of Court Lane. They have a sign, a Purple Heart Bridge. And there's another one as you go into Post Falls on nine ninety, the Purple Heart Highway. Those, uh, those signs, uh, can be purchased through an organization with the VFW. Uh, my post has, uh, approved a hundred and twenty dollars for up to two signs. Um. Although I'm kinda hoping Bob will twist the arm of the Kiwanis and, and, uh. Get however many signs you think the city would like to have, if any. Um, Liberty Lake's got a reputation throughout the, the veteran community. The Vietnam Mall last year. The banners that you're showing on the main street over there by Home Depot now. And so this is just icing on the cake. And I can tell you that all veterans, uh, really appreciate what you're doing. Especially those that have been wounded in combat and the families of those that have died. So with that, I'll take my leave and have a seat.
Thank you. Thank you for your service. Any, any final comments?
Yes, can we, um, put on a future agenda purchasing maybe half dozen of those signs at least?
Certainly.
And we'll be raising money through private efforts to get that, including some donations that people are already interested in. Yeah.
All right, any other comments? Great, thank you. Thank you, everybody, again. Appreciate it. Okay, moving very long, um, reports and inquiries, city council.
Um, I'll take that. I hope everybody enjoyed the garage sale. Uh, high stats would be a hundred and seventy houses registered through the guide. Hope you enjoyed the, uh, the Google map that brought you to that. Um, five food trucks and must have been fifteen of the, uh, vendors lined up in park. I believe everybody had a good time and I think most of all, everybody got a lot of stuff out and a lot of people wanted it, got it, yeah. Um, next up for our summer actions, I'll call it as the first movie of the season on the third, that's the Monday before the fourth of July. And of course, our concert on the fourth of July. And then right after that, on the Saturday, the eighth, another movie. So we're kinda getting right underway into summer. Thanks.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Um, well. We had the staff barbecue last week and I don't think we can thank staff enough, but it was very well attended and, um. I think that, uh, our city staff. Should allow us to help organize that instead of helping put the whole thing on together. Um, but it was, it was well attended by everybody, the people that did come. Again, nature was wonderful to us and we had a beautiful day. Uh, thank you to, uh, Uniformed Officer, uh, Lieutenant Darren Morgan and our, and our city manager, uh, to, um. Cook up all of the hamburgers with a grill that last year didn't work and this year didn't work either, but we did it.
Anybody else? I have a couple of things I'd like to bring to this body's attention. Some residents have reached out to me with some specific questions or comments. Uh, if I could share them at this time. Uh, the first one is, uh, from Cody Koppenstein. Um, and I don't know, I think I was the only one that might have received the email, not sure. Uh, but he has asked if there's any, if there's a, uh, if there's any chance that he could lease. Uh, a piece of property over at the farmer's market, um, for a, uh, uh. A coffee shop that is temporary. Um, right across, it'd be on the, um, Appleway, uh, what's the cross street?
Signal.
Signal, yeah, on that corner out on Appleway. Um, so I told him I'd, I'd bring it forward and not that I'm looking for discussion tonight, but, um, just. Maybe for future agenda discussion. I don't know if, Mark, you have any thoughts on that or am I? Basically where everybody parks for the farmer's market is what he said.
So.
But not the whole parking lot, just a little corner.
Yeah, we may need to reach out and have a conversation to see exactly what it is and then kind of figure out the details.
Right, and I told him that, but I said I would bring it up.
Okay.
Uh, the next one is, um, um, I don't think maybe, but was I the only one that got a letter from Gene Cohen? Everybody did, right?
Just kinda north of the river?
Correct, yeah. So I just wanted to acknowledge that we've received that letter and I think it's worthy of further discussion, so. Like to put that on our agenda at some point soon. Uh, and then my last one is, um, from a resident that, uh. Uh and then my last one is um from a resident that uh uh his, he's having extreme difficulty renewing his homeowner's insurance due to the recent hailstorm that we've had and the amount of homes that have had their roofs replaced. Um and uh the, the big name companies, the first question they're asking seems is, what's your zip code? So I think that, that we may start to experience or hear or just give our residents a heads up that if you're renewing your insurance and you file the roofing claim, you may want to not wait until the last minute. Um and I, I think uh one of the big parts of that uh discussion from the insurance companies is the fact that they can't use credit as a qualifier any longer. Um so just wanted to put the word out there that he's not the only one. There's several in my neighborhood that are experiencing it. And I can't imagine it's not everywhere else too. Um so that's all I have. Thank you.
Yes. Uh the real Spokane Valley baseball season wrapped up last week. Um and they are in desperate need of more fields. Um and I know that that's one of the um items that we have on an upcoming workshop discussion. They'll be going into the Fall League in um August. And they probably won't have as big a problem then because they're not competing against the middle schools for the fields as well. But um I think that's something that Lisa, or excuse me, um Jen was looking into um a- as well. Uh so I think the sooner that we could try to tackle that uh for them, so they have a plan for next year, the better. Otherwise, the president of the league told me last night that they probably will have to start churning kids away.
All right, bear with me, make a notes while we talk. Uh okay, uh any, anybody else? Council comments? Hearing none, we'll move right along. Um I don't have anything from the mayor. Does anybody else have anything from the mayor? Top secret information, you know, while she's not here. No, okay, moving right along. City administrator.
All right, thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh you've got the report in front of you and going through the list of events and reminders. The AWBC Annual Conference is upon us. Uh we've been talking about this for a while. The mayor is there tonight. A handful of us are going to be there uh for uh Wednesday, Thursday, Friday sessions. Uh based on the schedule, there's a lot of good stuff that's applicable to all sizes of cities. Great opportunity to network with other uh colleagues from other places, uh talk about common interest, common concerns, and uh opportunities to uh maybe partner to do some, some good stuff. So looking forward to that. Um July fourth fireworks and concert, Councilmember Dunn mentioned that, and I'll take the opportunity to um put a plug in for our new summer calendar. This replaces our springtime calendar that we've talked about for quite a while. And around uh the, the fourth, we've got several things going on that are listed on the calendar. Uh Liberty Lake Boat Parade on the third, Movies in the Park starts on the third. Got the thirty-third annual uh parade at Alpine Shores on the fourth, and then the Fourth of July Concert and Fireworks on the fourth. This year, it's going to be, and I think this is the same as last year, Too Slim and the Tail Draggers. Um and so looking forward to that. Uh a reminder, the fourth this year is on a Tuesday. So City Hall and Library will be closed on the Fourth in observance of Independence Day. And I'll just skip to the, the item regarding the meetings. Because of that, city council has, has voted to make the July meetings uh on the eleventh and eighteenth. So instead of the fourth and eighteenth, this year, they're going to be on the eleventh and eighteenth, so the second and third Tuesdays. Um talking about the Strategic Plan Survey, we had originally uh planned to have that open through July second. Uh but since we're having all of these festivities, using one more opportunity to get more input, we're going to hold that open and close it on July fifth. Uh as of this afternoon, we had about three hundred and forty uh completed responses. Over four hundred people have provided some kind of response. So we've got a good turnout so far. Always could use some more. So if you've uh been wondering whether or not it's a good idea to fill out the Strategic Plan Survey, now's the time to do it. You've got until July fifth. Um any questions about the events and reminders before we move on? All right, great. So uh we have submitted the department reports for your review and would like now to open up the floor for any questions on any of that information.
I just want to make a shout out to the three last overhead utility poles adjacent to the driving range. Uh this really nice change person. Thanks.
Absolutely. All right, seeing none other, I'll move on to the next item, which is a note about our audit exit interview. Kyle?
Thanks, Mark. Uh Mayor Pro Tem, Council, uh those in the audience, I am very excited to announce that so the auditors are about ninety-seven percent wrapped up with their twenty-twenty-two uh annual uh financial accountability and federal single audit for our ARCA funds. Uh so we have a tentative, and I would say it's more permanent than tentative at this point, exit conference scheduled for Thursday, June twenty-ninth at one PM via Zoom. And we will send out the details of that along with that link once we receive that from the auditors. Um we anticipate uh another clean audit. Um I think there might be a, a, a couple of things here and there that they usually uh include in the exit conferences, say, hey, you know, maybe brush up on this and so. But, but nothing of any substance. And so um so with that, I, I will pass that along to mayor, council, and staff uh once I receive that. But um but yeah, so I just wanted to let you guys know that that's coming next week, next Thursday.
Any questions? All right, moving along, we've got, and I think David's still in the room. David's going to come up to the podium and talk about our capital project update. David?
Good evening, Mayor, uh Pro Mayor Pro Tem, City Councilmember says in Liberty, Liberty Lake, uh I'm David Williams, the city engineer. This is my uh couple projects update for you. There are seven projects I'm going to be talking about here. Um hopefully, I get your excitement going again. Councilmember Dunn about the polls coming down, because one more coming down. Okay, next slide, please. Our Slip Lane Project, uh the work began on time and is slightly ahead of schedule. We actually didn't expect them to be done so fast. Hi. Uh so right now, uh you'll see the paving's actually done. We're asking citizens to please be aware that we left the traffic control up because landscaping is not complete yet. That's how fast we actually got that thing, uh the thing done. So just know when you come to the intersection, you'll see, still see the arrows, you'll still see these cones. Please abide by them. It's there for a reason. Next slide, please. Okay.
Was it a four inch?
Actually, we, we went thicker.
It was being four tonight. I thought about getting out, but there was cars behind me.
Yeah, this, yeah. You can measure next time if you like. Uh well, you're hired. You'll be hired. Okay, uh yeah, next. Okay, so the next project is a rapid flashing beacons. Um they're beginning that work on Thursday, um and I'll be inspecting all of those. Uh and those are the three corners. So you, you just again, watch out for the traffic, uh the, the crew, the construction crews out there. They are going to be putting these rapid flashing beacons very soon. Uh next slide, please. The Liberty Lake Public Works Yard, you can see that the building is coming, coming along very quickly. Uh the shells up, the sides are up now that we're doing a lot of the interior work from plumbing to electrical HVAC. All of that's coming together very quickly. Um we'll have more photos for you the next time I uh do the presentation. Next slide, please.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Uh I don't expect you to be able to answer the question right this second, but on these projects, as you give us updates, can you maybe give us an idea of, are we on budget?
I can. Um I could definitely do that to you via email as well. Um would, do you want that next time via email or?
Uh just.
Just in the future, okay, moving forward. Okay, I sure can. I sure can.
You would tell us if we were over budget, right?
Sure. Don't hold me to that. My mom's back. Okay, next slide, please. The Crimber Bridge Project, as you know, uh it is, that's well underway. The major portion's going to be happening soon. Here will be the paving. They're setting the subgrade, the uh sidewalks are up. If you look at the, let me see here, the bottom left picture, you can kind of make out that the rebar's been set for the sidewalks and for the curb. So those are all poured now. They'll be taking down uh forms coming next week, so there will be night work as well. Paving operation will be taking place in late July. So just prepare for that. It will look more like a road, and please, if you're a pedestrian, please don't go up there on the weekend. We just ask that, please. Not a safe work zone.
Is the bridge surface concrete or asphalt?
It's concrete.
Yeah, okay.
One more question.
Go ahead.
Um are they going to be putting signs on the, the bridge? I know the original sketches showed a um interstate signs that were actually on the bridge going westbound that talked about the upcoming exits. Are they still doing that?
Uh you know, let me look at that, because I know that there's some details for the signage. I guess I can actually email that too, if you like. Next slide, please. Oh, I'm sorry, just for this one, uh we, I'm working with the mayor to do a groundbreaking ribbon cutting, so look for that in late August as well. The Stormwater Master Plan, the application to extend the uh this uh Stormwater Master Plan grant through ecology was approved. The contract to extend the grant contract is on the agenda uh this evening, so you guys will be voting that tonight. Next slide, please. The Spread Overlake Future Project, again, we are looking at that. We do receive phone calls from time to time. If you look at the top right corner, that is what the cores look like on that road. So we have a variety of asphalt, the layers there. So we're going to be changing that in the future. Um there'll be a lot happening on that road coming in about next year. Next slide, please. And this goes to you, Councilmember Dunn. There will be, the last pole will be removed, uh most likely either ne- uh next Tuesday, Thursday, or Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. It's uh the twenty, yeah, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, yeah, those two. It's going to be one of those two days. We're meeting with the county tomorrow to discuss how we're going to actually do the operation. It's going to be either one of two things. We're going to get a generator to keep the signal up, so there's no issue with power. Or we're going to attempt to do a full traffic control operation. If we do the full traffic control operation, you'll see that on Facebook and social media. It will be, uh we ask that you plan accordingly because there will be delays at that intersection. It'll just be for one day, though. That'll be it. It'll be a, not be from open to close, seven AM to about five PM. Next slide, please. Again, in construction zones, please be aware of construction crews. Do not go in those areas on the weekends, please. Uh next slide, please. If you have any questions, that's my phone number and my email address as well. Any questions? Thank you all.
Thank you, David. All right, and I'm going to ask uh Lisa to come up and, and give uh an exciting update about the Trailhead Clubhouse. Lisa?
Thank you, uh council members, Mark. Um I'm just going to pull up or Taz can pull up my presentation real quickly. So we, uh exciting times. We uh did the walkthrough for the punch list today. There are still a few things that need to be taken care of, but we're coming right along. The facility looks beautiful. Um very excited. Um they were, they were working on today on getting the lighting behind the trailhead sign in that uh top left-hand picture. Um we've got the AV equipment in, the um, the uh simulators are in. Uh the new putting green looks great. We finished the concrete detail work. Uh landscaping is going to, uh they're going to be finishing up some of the landscaping tomorrow and hydro seating. Next slide, please. So our schedule, so uh first of all, we did issue a temporary certificate of occupancy last Friday. Yay. Um and we did the punch list walkthrough today. The pro shop is going to begin moving in and setting up by the end of this week. There's a few, there's a few little work, a little bit of work that needs to be done so that it's not dusty when they start moving their merchandise in. Um and the pro shop is planning on having a soft opening on June thirtieth. The uh, the uh temporary uh pro shop will be gone. The trailer will be gone as of the thirtieth. Um and uh right now, the grand opening is a date to be determined. And um we're looking at probably mid to late July at this point, just because of some of the, the, some of the things that we're still waiting on that we want to make sure are in place before we do our grand opening. And it'll give Chris and his crew a little bit more time to kind of uh work through the uh the um what you always go through when you're opening a new facility. So um very, very exciting. Yes, we are on budget. So that's all I have for you. Any questions?
I do, actually. Lisa?
Lisa, we got a question here.
Thank you. Uh who had the luxury of doing the walkthrough?
Um so I actually did the walkthrough. Chris did the walkthrough. Trevor did the walkthrough. We had several people from Bowton. We had OAC there. We had uh several people from Architects West. So and uh it was, it was a good crew, and we have little blue tape up everywhere in every room. Just the, the little details that need to be addressed.
Great, thank you. And then uh I don't know that uh maybe we talked about it way back, but is there some sort of a warranty with the building?
Yes, there actually is. And so um we're not going to be closing out the Bowton contract for, I believe it's a, a year. Um because everything is under warranty. They have been scheduling um trainings for the equipment, the HVAC, the um uh contr- the, the um uh the keys and locks and whatnot um because obviously we have a high-tech system, uh the AV equipment, et cetera. So they've been scheduling uh trainings with everybody over the course of the last week and into next week.
My last question, if I can, not to put you on the spot, but uh I don't want you to get out of the golf course business quite yet. Wondering how we're doing with the poles and netting.
A- as a matter of fact, I have an update for you.
Perfect.
So um I sent all of the bid, uh our, our standard bid docs to the engineer. Um he's doing the final design and doing the stamping calculations. We will run it through, we'll get the building permit first, make sure that there's no changes before we bid it. We're hoping to get this bid the beginning of, or, or the bid advertised beginning of July. And we are hoping, um if, if we can follow that schedule, to be bringing it back to you for a ward bid at the end of Aug, the second meeting in August. Um with construction can begin anytime after October first.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
If no other question? Sean, did you have a question?
No.
Oh, sorry. So if no other questions, Mayor Pro Tem, that concludes my report.
All right, great. We'll move right along. Uh Liberty Lake Sewer Water District. Anybody back there? No, okay. Uh we have no workshop discussion. Uh so we'll move into general business. So I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda items ten, A, B, C, and D as published.
Second.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Perfect, thank you. At this time, I'd like to just make an observation. I know that at our last meeting, we talked about how we could speed up our meetings. And as I was looking at this, um uh I, I, part of me feels like um maybe we should not have any budget-related item in our consent agenda. Um because I kind of feel like um if it's in our general business uh items and it's related to money, it will maybe encourage, encourage everybody to take a harder look at it than we might normally if it's on the consent agenda. So just food for thought, yes.
But if, if it's on the agenda and it's, is there a way we can do it so that if it's within budget? Because if it's not within budget, then I think we need to have a discussion about it.
I think that would be a pleasure to moment, which is a more than a consent agenda.
Correct. Yeah, I, all I'm saying is, if it has to do with money, if it's on, for me, I'm not only speaking for me, if it's on general business, it en- it encourages a, a stronger look at what's there. Not that I don't look at the consent agenda, but the consent agenda items are a little more of a slam dunk kind of a just topic. Just something to think about. Okay, all right, general business eleven A. Make a motion to confirm the mayor's appointment of Charlie Jenks to the Planning Commission.
Second.
Second? Who's second? Annie, okay. Um I'd sure like to hear from Mr. Jenks if he doesn't mind.
Good evening, council members. Um my name is Charlie Jenks. I moved to Liberty Lake. I am a resident of Liberty Lake. I moved to Liberty Lake from Maui, Hawaii. Lived on Maui for thirty-two years. Uh moved to Maui to build homes, and I did some light, light industrial and commercial development on the island. Um and decided to retire, moved to the Northwest, which is an area that I have, I've admired for many, many years. Lucky to be here, bought a house in Legacy Ridge in twenty fifteen, occupied that house in twenty eighteen. I'm, I'm, the reason why I, I applied for the adjunct position is that I think given my experience in development and public service uh, for the last forty-plus years, perhaps, um, I can bring something to the table and help the city. I, I, I do recognize that the city is, um, has come a long way. I need to learn more about the history of the city. Um, but I'm willing to put in the time and the, uh, and the study to make sure that I contribute positively to the city. So if you have any questions to me, I'd be happy to entertain them.
I'll just make a comment. I work with Charlie on our HOA board in Legacy Ridge and I'll say this about this, yeah, this man. He cuts through the BS quicker than anybody I've seen. Uh, he's not afraid to tell you what he thinks. Uh, so I think he'd be a great addition to the planning commission. So thank you for applying.
Thank you.
Questions? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Six to one. Thank you. Okay, uh, item number twelve, council comments. Thank you, Charlie. Council comments? No? Okay. We'll move on to item number thirteen, public hearings and appeals. Twenty-four, twenty-nine transportation improvement plan.
Waiting for the, I'm waiting for the presentation, actually. But again, good evening, uh, council members. Um, he's working on it. So this is our annual, uh, adoption of the transportation improvement plan, twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-nine. Um, we, it's adopted by resolution and we are required to adopt it by, uh, by, uh, June thirtieth every year. And then there's a distribution list that I send it out to, including but not limited to the Secretary of Transportation for the state of Washington. If we, uh, hope to have a project to get grant funding for a project that's transportation-related, it must be on our transportation improvement plan. And, uh, next slide, please. So, um, I did want to point out to you that as of four PM today, the SEPA period closed on this with no comments, no appeals. So, uh, we move forward with the DNS and the adoption of, uh, existing environmental documents. And, uh, we have an adoption by resolution on later this, uh, this meeting. Next slide, please. So again, um, and we talked about this at the last workshop, uh, the tip adjustments generally there, uh, I start out with the base, the, the prior year's capital facilities plan for the transportation elements. Uh, costs get updated to reflect engineers' opinions of probable cost. Um, timing is adjusted to, to some, uh, or to balance out some of the workload and cash flows, et cetera. Um, we're using right now, uh, future value, um, inflation rate of eight point five percent a year. That is based on the five-year construction cost index, the average. Um, it, I expect it to come down somewhat in the future and when it does, we will make, uh, adjustments accordingly, but for right now, it's, uh, it's a good way for us to make sure that we're being realistic about what the cost of these projects will be in the future. Um, timing for TIF lift eligible items, um, have been adjusted by the various sponsors, projects by others. And, um, we also have added a few, uh, projects based upon roadway conditions. Next slide, please. So what's different about the tip, uh, that I put together based upon, uh, the workshop two weeks ago? So we did move Country Vista Boulevard Right Turn Lane, which is TP three and Appleway Overlay TP fifteen to twenty twenty-five to allow for the Mission Avenue Overlay Grant to proceed in twenty twenty-four and not risk losing that baby. Um, we also separated out the Appleway Trail Extension. It's now new TP twenty-eight from Country Vista Rebuild TP two. So you'll see a little bit of a reduction in, um, in the Country Vista rebuild to account for the trail just being moved as a separate project. I think that that was probably a really smart move because we may be able to get, uh, different grant funding uh, for that project versus Country Vista. Like, like the first two, um, that we talked about, the Country Vista Boulevard, um, improved in intersection improvement and Appleway Overlay. Just because they're separate projects doesn't mean we can't bid them and construct them together. But it does give us an opportunity to go after maybe some different pots of money. We also added a sidewalk improvement on Mission Avenue from the Meadowwood Tech Campus to Simpson Road as a new project in twenty twenty-seven. Again, prior, the years may change. Out-year projects always can change based upon priority, et cetera. In particular, our preservation projects, uh, from twenty twenty-five on and our sidewalk projects from twenty twenty-five on are likely to, we'll see them, um, possibly changed based upon the sidewalk master paint plan and the pavement, uh, um, the pavement, uh, master plan. So next slide, please. So wanted to take a moment to just pause and talk about how the money has been allocated to various, um, categories. We have eight point seven million dollars in preservation dollars, uh, eleven point six million dollars in enhancements. Um, we do have, uh, three hundred, a little bit over three, three hundred thousand in, uh, for plans and reports. And that's the master plans, uh, for the, the payment master plan and the sidewalk master plan. We also in the tip have seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars that are projects by others. But I want to point out that when you look at this, there's nine point nine million dollars in projects by others that are not in the transportation improvement plan at this point because they're not on public property yet. And so, so that I just wanted to point that out. I do include that because it's really good for us to be aware of that as we're looking at the tip. Next slide, please. And this is just kind of, uh, what a breakdown of the, uh, our transportation investment by category based on the tips. So the projects by others does not reflect the other projects that are not, um, in the tip yet. Next slide, please. With that, time for public testimony. Any questions to me before I sit down? Thank you all.
Thank you, Lisa. Start the public hearing at seven forty-five. There any comments? Anybody on Zoom? Hearing none, we'll close. Public comments at zero forty-five and a half.
Forty-five.
Seven forty-six. Seven forty, okay, forty-six. Okay, great. Thank you, Lisa. Thank you. All right, moving on to, uh, resolutions. Uh, make a motion to approve res- you want me to make a motion first?
Resolution number twenty-three dash two forty-seven, resolution of the City of Liberty Lake, updating the six-year transportation improvement program for two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-nine.
Perfect. Thank you. I'll make a motion to approve resolution number two-three dash two-four-seven, adopting the twenty-four, twenty-nine transportation improvement plan.
Second.
Any discussion? Any citizen comments? On Zoom? Negative. Thank you very much. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you very much. Item number fifteen, ordinances.
Ordinance number two ninety-five, and ordinance of the City of Liberty Lake, Washington, granting the right of franchise to Zipley Fiber Pacific LLC, Wholesale Networks LLC, Zipley Wireless LLC, wholly owned subsidiaries of Northwest Fiber LLC for the operation of telecommunications system in the City of Liberty Lake.
I realize there's no action, but any, uh, council comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move, yep.
If I may, I just wanted to point out, so Zipley is the company that bought out the Terra.
Thank you. Okay, hearing no further comments. There's no emergency orders, ordinances, introduction, but upcoming agenda items. Mark, did you want to take the lead on that or, um, I'll share what I have written down?
Sure. Um, so we've got, uh, and, and you should all have a copy of the matrix. We've got some items on there that, uh, have been on there for a while. And as you can see, we had the discussion, uh, with the parametrics review this evening. Uh, looking forward, uh, a couple of, uh, meetings in advance, we're going to have a, a couple of discussions. If you'll recall, uh, we had, um, kind of a forecasted, uh, insurance decision that was forthcoming. And so we're going to invite, um, CIAW, uh, and WCIA in on separate work sessions to kind of present their plan, uh, to city council could, so you can get a flavor of the differences between those. Kyle, do you have anything to add to that?
Uh, so just more specifically, I was able to get confirmation from both this afternoon that on the eleventh, at six o'clock, we will have our current insurance carrier CIAW. And at the six o'clock session on July eighteenth, we will have a prospective insurance carrier WCIA uh, presents, and both in similar fashions for the six o'clock return.
All right, thanks, Kyle. And then if you look out a little bit farther, uh, something that council member, um, Cargill mentioned earlier tonight, we've got a to-be-determined for the baseball field space. We may want to consider accelerating that and giving it a date certain. Is there any thought to what that may need to be?
I, I was just going to, uh, recommend maybe Jen, if she's available at either the eleventh or the eighteenth meeting, perhaps, since we, it doesn't appear we have something in the, um, seven o'clock. Uh, to just kind of give us an inventory of what we currently have and what would be a possibility. And then we go from there.
Can I add to that? Um, I think it might also be helpful to understand what the need is to, like, how many fields we're talking about. Um, so if there's maybe some work that could be done to assess that with, um, the contact that you had, Chris, uh, Councilmember Cargill. Um, the other piece that I was interested in, in hearing more about, um, is alternative funding sources for that. I know the city, it's a city ballpark, but we've talked about five oh one C threes before. We've talked about alternative funding. We've talked about grants. Um, so really understanding what some of those options are, um, moving forward and what that process would look like, um, to see if there's some community support, um, to, you know, get these built.
And if, if we have a date, um, we can, I can certainly get ahold of the league folks and they can come back in and present something to us as well.
So are you wanting to have all of that on July eleventh or just the inventory portion, then we come back and hit the others at a, at a later time?
Whatever the council wants to do is fine with me.
So is it just a fact-finding, uh, July eleventh kind of a report or are we looking for some long-term strategies?
So it sounds like we've got a couple of components. One of them is just kind of assessing inventory and need and then other is looking at.
Yeah, what the, I would think that we could do inventory and need on the same night. I don't think it has to necessarily broken up.
Jen's on.
Yeah, so I can provide, um, inventory. That's not a problem. Um, but I mean, we, we're limited, obviously, with our existing park spaces with what we have to offer. And really, there isn't an opportunity to add ballfields like what we have at the Diamonds in our existing spaces. So the question is, what, you know, what would you want me to come prepared with beyond our existing inventory of park space and green space? If we knew, you know, I think as staff, we don't understand what the need is because we haven't heard it. So if you could get us in touch, get myself and Trevor Slocum in touch with, um, the person or, or you, council member Car- Cargill, what, what the desire and what the need is for more space, give, give us some details because we, this is the, this is kind of the first we had heard about it. So that we have an angle of what to research.
Yeah.
Um, that would be very helpful for us, um, in a future presentation.
Okay, well, maybe, um, Mark, I could reach out to the league and have them just come present something to us in July and then we could go from there.
Okay, we can.
Because we had, um, I'm forgetting his name, the.
Phil from.
Well, not Phil. Um, we had someone in March or April from the league come and testify. And he kind of danced around it a little bit in terms of what they need, but I'm sure Steve Robb would be willing to do it and I can reach out to him.
So, so why don't we connect and, and work on that schedule and then we can build everything around that?
Okay.
I just had another question because I, I think that part of the hub's final plan had some ballfields in it at some point too.
No.
Were they only square fields?
But weren't there also that they're not building yet? Wasn't there also some ballfields? Am I making that up? Phase two? Okay, I, I misunderstood that then. Okay.
Is that, is that accurate?
That is correct. There are no ballfields.
Okay, thank you.
They're all square fields. Okay.
I just like to add one more thing. It's really going to come down to land availability and proper zoning, um, and cost.
Yeah.
So, uh, to answer Jen's question, that's probably the bigger nut to crack than all the others.
But, and, and I think if we understand the need, then we can start talking about how to address some of those things. But I, that's, that's the, I think, the key piece that we need to understand.
I'll get back in touch with you as soon as I hear it back.
Okay, sounds good. And then if you look at some of these others, we've got, uh, whether it ends up being, um, the, uh, twelfth or the nineteenth or some other date. We put out that survey for council. I've got all of the responses except one. So within the next couple of days, we'll narrow down that strategic plan follow-up uh, and get a date certain on that so that everybody has it on their calendar. And then everything else here is either to be determined or just kind of on hold. Uh, are there other specific items that we need to add to this?
Hey, Mark, I'd like to set, add to a TVB date, um, city council committee's, just to the discussion.
Any others?
So, uh, my, uh, the request earlier on the coffee stand, do you want me to just forward you that information and?
Please. Yeah, and we can reach out and connect and get some more detail.
Uh, and then, um, do we want to set aside some time to discuss the property on the other side of the river?
Um, I guess I'd position that the urban growth area boundary is what principally defines the boundaries of the, and, you know, City of Liberty Lake. And then in the absence of shifts of the urban growth area boundary, uh, there's not a lot of discussion.
Well, that's your opinion, Dan.
Yep.
Um, I just think we should be having a discussion about getting it out in front of it. So either way, whatever the council wants to do.
So possible discussion on, we'll just call it the north side of.
Can I ask?
No, I mean, any disrespect, Anna, just if, if it's, if the boundary moves, then we're kind of behind the eight ball is how I feel about it. If we can be proactive and, I mean, maybe we don't get our wishes, but maybe we do. So that's, that's my only thinking.
So I may suggest that we frame this in a, like a pre-comprehensive plan update discussion or something. Lisa, do you have any input on this one?
Yeah, I think that that would be the appropriate place to start is that, uh, is to talk about the, the, the comprehensive planning process, which is starting right now in terms of the land quantity analysis and the land capacity analyses, et cetera. And that's the segue into the conversations that happen with all the jurisdictions regarding the urban growth boundary. So maybe I could tee, tee up the conversation with just kind of giving you the lay of the land in terms of what the process looks like and what the timeline looks like. Does that make sense?
That would be great.
Lisa? No apologies. When was the last time that we had a comp plan update? Um, so, so the comp, comprehensive plan update was, uh, adopted here in Liberty Lake in twenty sixteen.
Okay.
So this is, this is the periodic comprehensive plan update that we have to adopt by June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. And there's some other components that you also should be aware of in terms of big changes to the Growth Management Act that are going to drive what we have to do. And in fact, that'll be part of our budget discussions also. And in fact, that'll be part of our budget discussions also, frankly.
Right. Thank you. Having, having been through that a couple of times, yeah, thank you.
What was that date again? 2026?
Yeah, June 30th, 2026. I'll tell you, but I will say this, next year, we are eligible for $125,000 grant from the state of Washington to begin working on our comprehensive plan. But it's, that's not going to cover the cost of it. It's only going to cover portions of the cost of it. So we can have more conversation about that also.
Great. Annie had a question. I'm not sure if it's for you, Lisa.
Uh, it's for, it's for all of us, I guess. I noticed that there's quite a few TBD items on our upcoming thing, and the agendas are looking fairly light for the next few meetings and then get budget. Happy. So I'm wondering if you actually want to try it at some point here soon, pick some dates to have some of these discussions? Because if they're on here, I think we need to talk about, we're not going to talk about them, just take them off.
So while you're contemplating, I'm going to ask Kyle, is there a specific meeting in September that we need to schedule the TIF lift update?
Just to get out in front of substantive budget discussions, because this is kind of a three-year outlook that we put out kind of as needed, or at least every three years. And so, um, I, I think we wanted to, I guess, to the greatest extent we could wrap up the discussion on mission, get some of these and get Kramer, get these things behind us so we have a better picture of what the next three years looks like for, for TIF lift eligible projects, projects by all of, all of those things. And so.
The meeting?
Um, in, in theory, it, it could be, you know, if we're in a position, we could present that at the second meeting in August. So I, I would, I would say, let's, let's leave it for the first meeting in September, and then we can kind of adjust that one forward, one backwards, kind of.
Are we done with that part? Yeah, I'll speak to the commission appointment process. I, I would really, um, like to see some feedback from council members on what it is that discussion should be geared towards. I mean, um, I know I'm the one that suggested it, but just coming to the table with my ideas only really just is a little start to a bigger conversation. So if we could compile everybody's thoughts and efforts into that, and I would also ask maybe for a little bit of staff support too, on how to, um, combine everybody's feedback, so we can have a meaningful meeting on that topic. Fair enough.
I agree.
Thank you.
Will we, will we have the ability to get into the flock safety HOA areas in August? For our discussion about trying to get some of these things scheduled? Just wondering.
Before the budget.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking too.
So maybe we put that on August 1st or, or the.
And I can't imagine that's going to take hours and hours. Isn't that a regular general meeting workshop item?
Can easily be, yeah.
Yeah.
So we're going to shoot for a first August meeting for that one?
Sure. And then similarly with the TBD sales tax, should we try to do that on the 15th then?
Kyle, any thoughts on that one?
And so we, we've chewed through a good chunk of what the revenue implications are, how we go about adopting this. I think there was going to be some feedback that I believe the mayor has received through some sort of substantial completion, what that looks like for businesses versus residential. And I think it's universally a better mechanism. Uh, the TBD sales tax is versus utility tax. And so some of the next steps, so one of the next steps is holding a public hearing, letting, uh, the community provide feedback on anything that we may not already be aware of. That is a statutory requirement. And then we get into the adopting ordinance. And so it's essentially, we can, we can piece this out in two separate meetings. We can have a public hearing in a first read, or we can have a public hearing followed at the next meeting by the first read, followed by the next meeting, the second read. And so all of that with the understanding that, um, other things that are out of our control, such as the public safety sales tax plays into all of this, that doesn't get reconciled until November. So we are really just setting the stage at this point. And I think we're to the point where we can probably start implementing that. I don't know if it necessarily requires a workshop, but we can put together maybe a bow on where, how we got to where we're at now, and then take those steps from there.
Is, is, is it the council's desire to have this resolved before we start with any budget proposals for next year? So if that's the case, then I guess I would, I would ask Kyle, when's the drop dead date? So you can incorporate that decision into preparing a budget for next year?
Um, we are essentially going to run parallel budgets, accounting for the approval of the public safety sales tax and the denial of that same opportunity. And what other outcomes are at play versus, okay, are we reducing the utility tax? Are we getting rid of it? And so I, I guess I don't need a drop dead date because we're going to run those concurrently regardless. And that, we don't, we don't know that until we're too far into the budget season, really to make any substantive changes from the outset. So I, I'd say we would want this wrapped up and in a position to implement before we start budget season, understanding that we don't have to implement the thing that we are setting the stage for, if that makes sense.
But Kyle, you recommended when we were discussing this in March, I think it was, that it was going to take about 60 days to get everything.
Correct. So based on the outcomes, we won't know until November. Uh, we will take action based on what that, what those outcomes are. And so we'll want the groundwork laid, and, and I could safely say, we would probably want that laid to Mayor Pro Tem's point. As we get into September and October, really substantive talks, so we know that we can implement this at the soon as possible date, if these outcomes are such that we do want to proceed with this.
I think back to your question, or somebody's question, do we need a workshop? Are we ready to start going into the approval cycle that Kyle described?
Kyle, correct me if I'm wrong, but we, the first step is to create the TBD, right?
Correct. And so step number one within that is to hold a public hearing. Step two, the adopting ordinance, creating the TBD. Step three is implementation of the, uh, of the sales tax within that.
And then step four would be to remove the utility tax?
Yes, and make the appropriate adjustments in utility tax. And if that is up to and including removing it, then that would be step.
Right, okay.
To answer your, your question, just speaking for myself, I don't, I've never felt this topic is even remotely close to being finalized as far as the direction we want to go. So I would be in favor of workshop just on this topic alone.
Good.
I concur as a workshop.
In September, September.
Kyle, do you recommend having the workshop in September or earlier?
Um, I would recommend earlier so that we can, I guess, get up to speed on the path forward based on the information provided at that workshop that then allows us the room to have a TBD adopted by September, let's say.
What about the first meeting in August?
So we can easily schedule this for the first meeting in August, and we can shift the flock meeting to the 7 o'clock workshop, assuming it's going to be a shorter discussion. Kyle, does that work?
Yep.
Good?
And I think that covers the list.
Anybody else? All right.
I'll, I'll ask again before you've put a nail on that one. Are there any other items that anyone wants to add? We, we had the discussion regarding city council committees, any others? And, and I had a jurors as well with.
Annie had brought up the C3 sponsorship of venues or events or.
Funding options, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I've got, I've got that one as a, an addendum to the baseball, baseball field discussions. We'll figure out where that fits.
Good, good. All right. Moving along. Any final citizen comments? Looks like so. Uh, Michael Hamblin, please.
Thank you. I'm Michael Hamblin. I live in the city. Um, really quickly, to add on, Councilman Cargill's idea on baseball fields, I actually coach in that league. Last year, as a Liberty Lake team, we were able to play half our games locally. This last year, we played most of our games deep into the valley, just because we couldn't find space. Regionally, there's enough fields. There just isn't enough fields in Liberty Lake. And so what that does is it puts a burden on the families. They get home and then they have to drive to valley because we practice before our games, so the kids don't have to practice game practice. And the field space is so limited, so you practice before your games and then you come play. So then they're home, they're driving deep into the valley, and then we're playing a game. And then they're coming home late because they're not getting out of the game until eight. So that's one of the challenges. It's not that we don't have enough fields regionally. It's just that we don't have enough here. Yeah, thank you.
Anybody on Zoom? Hearing none? Uh, no executive session. Motion to adjourn?
So.
8:07, thank you.
Todd has a huge smile on his.